Who is any eight finalists of the great American Main Street Award. So, where would that and excited.
Okay. Now, I'm going to re-welcome you to beautiful downtown Dennison. And the home of one of the eight finalists in the great American Main Street Award. Thank you again, Ms. Dow for all you've done in your department on that. So, we'll call the meeting to order. And as the first item, I'd like to invite Pastor Gene Amerson from New Beginning Fellowship to offer our invocation for this evening. If you'd rise, please.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we do give you glory this evening. We thank you for this meeting and this gathering. Thank you for the city that you've given us to live in. And thank you, Father, for the governing over it. And we pray tonight that your presence would be here, that your guidance would be here, and that you would reveal your perfect will. And Lord, I thank you for those who serve so diligently in our city. And I pray their blessing upon them. So, Lord, be here tonight, bring unity, peace, and joy in all these things we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. And one of our city directors, Mary Tate, if you would come forward and help us with our pledge of allegiance, please, ma'am. Thank you for bringing me.
Please do I mean a reciting of a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. I want to welcome everybody. And we are honored this evening to have the Dennison Independent School District Superintendent, Dr. David Kirkbride. And we're going to try to do this on a fairly regular basis where we can hear updates from the school and see what else is going on. There are so many exciting things ongoing with our growth. And Dr. Kirkbride, we are so pleased that you would give us a few minutes and love to hear what's going on.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Crowley, and the council for allowing me the opportunity to address you guys this evening. I know you have a full agenda tonight. I would like to provide the council a brief update of our current bond construction projects that were approved through the passing of a $132 million bond back in May of 2023. I'd also like to apprise the council of the district's next steps in continuing to monitor the 10-year comprehensive facilities plan that the Board of Trustees accepted from the Citizens Facilities Planning Committee in January of 2023. Regarding the current bond projects, all three of the elementary school additions at Terrell, Lamar, and Houston are well underway. As a reminder, we are adding a new kitchen, cafeteria, storm shelter, additional classrooms, parking, and drives at both Terrell and Lamar. At Houston, we are adding a storm shelter, additional classrooms, parking, and drives, but we will also be repurposing Houston campus as a new pre-K center for the entire district. All three projects at Terrell, Lamar, and Houston are on schedule to be completed prior to the start of next school year, so everything is on course. As you know, we held the official groundbreaking ceremony for the new B. McDaniel 5th and 6th Grade Intermediate Campus just last month. It was a beautiful morning out there on Highway 84. Poe Construction has begun the process of clearing and preparing that site for construction as soon as possible. The new B. McDaniel Building is on schedule to open its doors in two years to start the 27, excuse me, the 26th, '27 school year. The new B. McDaniel Building is going to allow the district to repurpose the existing B. McDaniel Building for administrative and support services. It will also provide a learning environment for our disciplinary alternative education program students, also known as our DAEP. Our Pathways High School students who are enrolled in the choice program will then be able to transition to the current DISD administration building. We are very excited about all of these projects that I've just described primarily because our students will be the benefactors of each of these projects. Also, I would add that all of these projects have placed the district in a very good position for the future. You'll hear a common phrase of "we are staying ahead of the curve," and all of these projects have done exactly that. It goes without saying, but it needs to be said, that it is extremely important that the city and the district continue to work closely together as both entities continue to prepare for the growth. This will always be important, and it always has been in Dennison, Texas, but never as important as it is during these unprecedented times of growth. What you do matters to us, and what we do matters to you. With that in mind, it is so important that we continue to keep these lines of communication open. And Mayor Crowley, I appreciate you saying that you welcome me to come and provide updates on a regular basis. The DISD Board of Trustees has formed and reconvened a Facilities Planning Committee that has been tasked with monitoring the 10-year comprehensive facilities plan of the district. It's hard to believe, but we are nearly two years into the plan that was provided to the board in January of 2023. The committee will be assessing the pace of that 10-year plan, whether we need to speed it up, do we need to slow down, do we need to maintain the pace that we thought we had? The committee is going to be extending the plan another two years so that we continually keep a 10-year vision in front of the district, and I think that that is exceptionally prudent. The committee will also be considering the possibility of land acquisition and transportation and technology needs of the district moving forward. The Facilities Planning Committee is a 46-member committee comprised of a cross-section of the Dennison community. There are representatives from each of the seven trustee wards, there are several DISD staff members on the committee, parent representatives from each campus, representatives from the City of Dennison, the Chamber of Commerce, the Dennison Development Alliance, as well as several at-large members. Dr. George Hatfield and Kelly Spiegel will once again be the co-chairs of this committee and will work closely with Steve Hulsey of Corrigan Architects and myself to lead the process. This is a very committed group of people that have taken, took their charge two years ago very seriously, and they're doing so again. We had our first meeting just two weeks ago, and we'll be meeting tomorrow evening at the DISD Service Center. Mary Tate from the city and Tony Kai will be joining us tomorrow night to provide an update on the various plans and developments across the City of Dennison. I would encourage the council to review the district's website over the next several months, because after each of our meetings, we will post information that was discussed in each meeting, and the website will also have a list of all of our committee members. If the council or the mayor has any questions at any time, please feel free to contact me, Dr. Hatfield, Kelly Spiegel, or any of the people on the committee. Again, I want to thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your continued support of Dennison ISD, especially during these exciting times of growth. And remember, it is always great to be a Yellow Jacket.
It is always great to be a Yellow Jacket. Dr. Kirkbride, if you could just give me one minute, I'd like to just tell you how much we appreciate what you do and what all of our staff does for our community and especially for the children. I'm the person that believes that education is the greatest of all professions. It's the most noble. Without our teachers, our future is not very bright at all. So, we thank you, we thank all of your staff, all the teachers, and everything that you do for our great kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kirkbride. Really appreciate it. Next item, public comments. Citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed in return to the city clerk upon arrival prior to the council meeting. Reaching this section on the agenda, the citizen's comments are limited to three minutes or otherwise as required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below will be heard when the specific hearing starts. And we have one person here, and he will speak later in the meetings, but no other cards. Now, we move to item four, the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments or a motion to move to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Redwine, a second one by Zeta between two of our friends. I'll just let Mr. Massey have the second on this motion. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we move into the public hearings, and we invite Ms. York to come speak to us about item number 5A, an ordinance discussion and a public hearing and take action on ordinance amending Article 6 and the definitions of Section 28.63 regarding e-cigarette, cigarette, cigar, and/or tobacco retail shops, and to provide amended regulations for e-cigarettes, cigarettes, cigar, and/or tobacco retail shops. This is case number 2024-097Z0. Actually, I think it's an O.
It's an O.
It's an O, Z-O for zoning. Okay, thank you, Ms. York.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to bring forth these proposed amendments to you. You may recall, at your meeting, at the city council meeting held on August 5th of this year, council received a project update from Ms. Mary Tate, the Director of Development Services, requesting direction on a proposed ordinance related to vape and smoke shop uses. It should be said that, right now, our ordinance is pretty silent on these uses, and when we receive a certificate of occupancy for a use that may fall under the umbrella of a vape or a smoke shop, we put them under just a general retail use. And so, right now, these uses are allowed in almost all of our non-residential zoning districts, so office, local retail, neighborhood services, commercial. So, when Mary, Ms. Tate, sorry, came before council, she was seeking direction to establish uses, definitions, as well as establishing zoning districts for which these uses were allowed or not allowed, as well as development standards. And those are the proposed amendments I bring forth tonight. If you will just bear with me, I'll go over just at a high level on some of these items. And we are proposing to create definitions for vape, CBD, hemp, consumable hemp products, e-cigarette, as well as establishing definitions and uses for e-cigarette, cigarette, cigar, and/or tobacco retail shop, and another use for tobacco bar. These two uses will be listed within the use regulation chart, establishing the zoning districts of allowance, be the commercial and the light industrial zoning district with an approved conditional use permit. So, they are not allowed by right, they would have to attain or obtain a conditional use permit, which is a zoning case that is recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission and approved by the city council. Furthermore, we are proposing prohibiting these uses within all of our overlay districts. Just as a reminder, those overlay districts are our highway and oriented and corridor district, which is US 75, our Morton Street Overlay District, Austin Avenue Overlay District, and then our Commercial Historic Overlay District, which is the downtown area. We are looking to establish some development standards for these uses, mostly related to requirements that are already required of these establishments, one of those being providing appropriate approval at the time of a conditional use permit application. They'll need to provide appropriate approval from the Texas Comptroller Office, as well as be a minimum distance of 1,000 feet from churches, hospitals, schools, and daycares. In addition to establishing these basic development standards, this section of the developments, thank you, Chris, this section that we are creating, thank you again, we are creating a revocation condition for if any reason there is a conditional use permit that is approved by the council, but these conditions, as well as any other conditions that are placed upon establishment are not met, we now have guidelines on how to revoke that conditional use permit. To comply with the local government code, city staff notified existing businesses, owners and property owners, that would be affected by these proposed amendments. City staff did an inventory of businesses or operations that we felt fell within this umbrella of vape or smoke shop, and we came up with 20 businesses that are currently in operation. Of those 20 businesses, we mailed out 45 letters to property owner, business owners, as well as applicants on the certificate of occupancy if they differed from the property or business owner. From those 45 letters, staff did receive eight letters back. Six were in opposition of the proposed amendments, two were in support, and of those six, those were all active business operations that were in opposition of these proposed amendments. Approval of the proposed amendments would effectively make these existing businesses legal non-conforming uses. The city is not asking for any retroactive action, we're not requiring these operations to cease if the proposed amendments are approved. However, if an existing operation is shut down for any reason by, due to state or local requirements not being met, it is possible that at that time, these issues, or these, sorry, these standards that we are proposing would come into play, and it's possible that they would have to meet all of the requirements that are being set before you. I should also mention that during the planning and zoning meeting, two of the commissioners had questions related to, and I'll try and explain this to the best so I don't sound silly, and so you guys can understand it. The question was that if, would an existing business be non-conforming or the use lapse if a new business owner were to come in with the same use, basically within a day or two or had to obtain a certificate of occupancy in a short period of time? And the answer that I provided to them was that, as long as the use is not abandoned over a continuous period of six months or 180 days, that use can continue. So, it is possible that the current operations that are existing right now could close, and a new business owner with the same use could move in without having to meet these requirements. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was expressed, since that was a question of the commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed amendments. I know that was a lot. Staff is seeking approval as well. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I have a question regarding, I know, and I'm not an expert in the vape field, but I know that gas stations tend to have some of the same products. If there was a gas station that sold some of the products that were listed, of course, I'm assuming that it's not going to be the same classification of a business. Are they allowed to still sell those same products?
Yes, this use is specific to the, just a straight retail of those products. If there were an issue where staff, and that's co-compliance, our office, the building department, as well as the police department, felt as if a business was not operating, as they presented in their certificate of occupancy, we would then have to do an inventory of that shop and determine, or the convenience store, and determine if they're actually retailing more of those products versus what a typical convenience store is.
Got you.
I've got several.
Okay.
Is 1,000 feet best practices around the state?
This is what was, I don't, I can't answer that. I don't know if that is.
But other special use permits are generally 1,000 foot alcohol relative to churches and schools is 1,000 feet?
I don't think it's a, is it 1,000?
Alcohol's 300, bill of the dollar.
Wow.
1,000 feet within the property law.
Okay. If they, so it seems like what we're trying to do is prevent, one, a change in the visibility of vapes within our community from a retail perspective, but also specifically targeted towards teenagers and children, right?
Yes, sir.
If you, and this is sort of a co-mingling between an offense that would be a criminal act, selling to a minor, and then the consequences of that, would the ordinance change potentially void a CUP if they are caught selling to minors?
Yes, 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 it would.
Sorry, shouldn't have asked that question about directions.
No, that's okay. It's listed, but I don't remember if it says specifically, but it does say state and local law, yes.
The objection letters that you got, were they aware that the grandfathering was the case?
I don't know. It's not how it, I don't believe that is how the letter was written. The letter had to be specifically written in accordance with the local government code. We had to specifically put in language that is required by that code.
I'm sorry, the response letters. You said you got six that were objecting.
Correct.
Do you feel like they were aware that the grandfathering, were their objections?
And that's why, and I'm sorry, maybe I'm kind of rambling, but I don't think we put any additional language in there, just so we were compliant with local government code. Now, when we had our commission meeting, there were individuals that came, and they did, some did express a little bit more of a, once they realized we weren't asking them to shut down.
And those were primarily from landlord or tenant?
Those were tenants, or, yes, business operators.
So, my wife is a children's ICU nurse in the pediatric hospitals, and when vapes became popular, I was thrilled, because I was tired of smelling cigarette smoke outside of my restaurants. And then she comes home and talks about the damage it'll do to the lungs, specifically the sweeter the flavor, the more crystalline sugar you get into the lung tissue, and the more damage, permanent damage, like kids coming in with stroke risk and that kind of thing at 12 years old. So, I for one really support the idea that we need to eliminate that particular risk, having grown up in an area where you could go buy cigarettes at 12, as long as they knew your mother was a smoker. So, I'd like to avoid us becoming that.
Yes, sir.
But as a landlord, it is honorous to me that we make sure we are not negatively impacting our ability as developers and a development-friendly community to support the revenue streams necessary for the beautification we want on all of our structures. So, I applaud you for threading that needle. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It was a joint effort, so I appreciate Heather, Mary, and the chief cudgel, so thank you for that.
Is there any, was there any discussion of more than 1,000 feet?
I don't believe so. I think we landed on the 1,000 feet.
That's just about a football field.
Just about, yep.
Anybody have any thoughts or questions about that? Okay. Any other questions? If not, this is a public hearing. We'd invite those who have comments either supporting or against the proposed ordinance to come forward at this time. And, sir, you're welcome to come up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Varan Chodri. I'm sorry, this is my first time to heading the city. If I do something wrong, so please apologize for the.
And could you please state your address for us? Where do you live?
Address for, sorry?
Yes, sir.
For the location where we.
No, sir, where you live?
I live in Plano City, and our business is in this Dennison city.
Okay.
And with the name of Planet Smokey. So, basically, we started this business last year, and I tried some points for all of you if you, because I, we got this letter, like we are, you guys are planning to shut down this business, so basically, we spent a lot of investment on this business. So, I wrote some points, so if you guys are agrees, and we're going to do like this. So, dear honorable city officials, we are just a tenant, we are not a property owner, and I have invested a lot of capital investment to setting, setting up this store, and we hired a local employee training and inventory in this business since last year, last one and a half year, and we plan, we have a plan to recover this setup cost over the last lease terms, which is at least five years. And if we lose this rise to do business, I will have to bear huge financial and morally losses, basically. And our smoke shop has been operating legally, complying with current federal and state regulation and laws. Closing the business could lead to our four local employees jobless, also it could affect from tax revenue and economy growth as well. So, these are my point to stay open this business, so otherwise, guys can.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Chodri?
I presume you have training policies in place to eliminate the risk of selling to children and that you're outside of 1,000 feet from a school?
I'm not that much aware of this type of things. I'm just little business operator, so it's a very technical things, I never thought about it, basically, so.
I'm also a small business owner, so I understand.
Yeah.
But I understood from the previous presentation that your operating business would be considered as a grandfathered business?
No, we are open last year, basically.
I'm sorry, that term means that you already exist, and therefore, you are by default allowed to continue operating even if the local ordinance would change, as long as you continue in operation.
Yes.
So, yeah, we're not shutting down your business. Whether we pass, if we pass this, we're not shutting you down.
Okay.
Because you already exist.
Yes, okay.
So, this is for future.
Future, okay.
People coming in, they have to follow these rules, but since you already are in business, then you can continue, whether we pass this or not.
All right. So, basically, it's putting the grandfather law on this.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Potentially, it might help, because it would eliminate, it would make a barrier for competition.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So, you're good.
It works in your favor.
Yes.
So, we will not shut you down.
All right, perfect.
So, if this passes, you are not shut down, you continue running.
All right.
I do have a question for the city, though. If you, if nobody else has. So, one of the questions is a landlord, I mean, he brings up a valid point, you've got a five-year lease, at the end of which, if the landlord sees that their business is exciting, there are landlords with nefarious intent that might choose to force a tenant out, and now they are forced to relocate and potentially lose their grandfathered status. So, what I heard earlier was that this is not a no, this is a contingent, conditional use permit application requirement.
Yes, sir.
So, case by case.
It would be, and it would be an allowance only within the commercial zoning district and light industrial zoning district with the conditional use permit, and not allowed in the overlays at all. So, that is something to consider.
This is, I think, a legal question, but is there the ability to stipulate prior experience in that particular industry within our city as a, I don't know, when I do government contracts, you get points for certain previous experiences. So, if he's got a business that gets forced out of its location, has to go somewhere else, does having the previous, is it possible to put into the ordinance language that having a previous operational business that has been in compliance and in good standing with the city is more favorable for those CUP applications?
Well, you could put it in there as, as one of the conditions to consider, but all of the other conditions have to be met in addition to that. So, you would have to look at the application as a whole.
Understood.
And the correct zoning districts and other things that would affect that as well.
And was there any discussion about certain zoning districts disallowing?
I believe so, and that is, that's why we, we wanted to prohibit the use within the overlay districts. And then only allow it within the commercial and light industrial zoning districts. So, kind of in our residential areas, which, if you look at the zoning map, we've got some weird zoning areas. But for the most part, your local retail, your neighborhood services, your office zoning districts are very adjacent to your residential areas. That could be, you could find a weird commercial zoning area as well, but for the most part, the commercial and light industrial zoning areas are furthest away from those neighborhood areas.
Can we go back to the slide that lists out the different products that would be sold at the, because what I didn't notice in there is this new FDA allowed THC derivatives that are, that seem to be cropping up at gas stations all over the state? Do we have any of that in Dennison today?
I don't know if I would be able to speak to that.
Okay, okay.
We do. And we had discussed, we don't have the capacity as staff to be going in and inventorying and testing from financial capacity or human capacity. Now, the police department, of course, operates differently. They may do undercover things, I don't know, to test, but that is a very difficult thing to nail down, so it can't be over 0.3%. Are people selling? Sure they are. That's, that's why we have what we have going on. But there's no way for us as a city outside of the police department to really regulate that. And we did have those discussions on that. I think Heather and her staff, we all learned quite a bit going through this process because it is so new, and so there was a lot of discussion about where our limits are, how far we can legally take something. So, at some point in time, we may have to come back and amend, amend the definitions or the uses and things like that. or the uses and things like that.
And if I could add just a little bit to that, we made sure that we included the definition to account for what is legally allowed to be sold, sold as part of hemp product, CBD product, and we added in a condition that failure to comply with state, federal, local regulations could be terms for an automatic nullification of the conditional use permit. So if there is any violations and a product being sold that's outside of what is legally allowed to be sold, then, then it would automatically nullify the conditional use permit. But we were, like Mary said, there, there's the definitions or there's so much out there. So we were very careful to make sure that we included definitions that were very specific to what the state statute allows for and the comptroller's permit that, that e-cigarette providers or retailers and tobacco cigarette, cigar providers are allowed to sell. So we included that language in the ordinance. Hope that clarifies that.
Thank you.
And one other thing I wanted to clarify, you asked a question earlier about the thousand feet. One of the things, reasons that we considered the thousand feet is there is a statute, and I was trying to find the actual statute to reference it for you, but that prohibits advertisements being located within a thousand feet to a school or a church. And so we took that into consideration when we were putting that thousand feet distance requirement in there.
I guess my question would be if we wanted to say fifteen hundred or two thousand feet, would, could we do that, or is a thousand feet the limit?
Well, because this is so new, there is no thousand-foot limit, so we, we've stuck to what the statute actually calls for, for the ban on advertisement. At this point, there's no case study that says we can go further or we can't go further, so if the council wishes to go that direction, we could.
But we could always, we can always amend whatever is approved if we approve this tonight.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Any others to speak on behalf of or against the proposed ordinance? All right. If you would please give us your name and address.
Yes, sir, I am Andrew Gilbert, address 1201 South Rusk Avenue. I serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Administration for Denison ISD. I wanted to speak to you guys tonight and thank you for your attention to this important topic. As a representative of the public school system, we strongly support the proposed city planning and zoning update to limit the location of vape and smoke shops, shops in our community. Our primary concern is the health and well-being of our students. As Councilman Massey spoke to, we are seeing significant concerns across our district. We've had students as low as second grade be in possession of these type of products on our campuses. And that's not a specific thing to Denison ISD. This is happening in districts all across the state and districts all across our county. Currently, this semester, so since the beginning of the school year, Grayson County has had to refer seventy-plus students that will have felony-level charges because of the types of products that are being passed along, sold to, distributed, getting into the hands of students because they have THC-level products that we, we test at campus levels. And so there's significant concern for us on the continued access to these types of products near and close to our academic facilities and just the long-term impact that can have on our students and their futures. So Denison ISD is very much in support of this ordinance, and we appreciate you considering it.
Thank you. Any questions, council?
You said over seventy?
Over seventy in the county just since the start of school year this year. Yes, sir.
I have a question regarding, before this was super popular, do you have numbers regarding how many students had similar charges before this was a big thing?
Of a felony-level charge, it was, I, I wasn't in this district, I can speak to previous experience in another district, the rate at which we would have a student committing a felony-level charge on campus was minor, extremely minor. In my time as a former high school principal, for six years, I think I had two in a six-year period. So it's, it's significant, and then our kids don't realize the consequence, and I'm, to be honest, a lot of times they don't realize what they're in possession of, what was in it, and those things, and so they're getting caught up in that situation as well just because of the product that is being sold to them.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate. I think some of them are just products of environment and doing things that are cool, right? And I don't know, this is probably a bigger question, just because I know we, we're big on redemption and giving people second chances, is there, what is the plan moving forward to, as that number grows, to, you know, find ways to rehabilitate and just have an opportunity to get them out of, you know, something that's a dumb mistake that can cost them the rest of their life?
Absolutely. So a larger question for the district attorney's office, however, I can tell you, having seen how they have worked with our students, I've been very impressed with the willingness that they are to work with our kids and let them learn from their mistakes and not necessarily make it something that's going to follow them long-term. Yeah.
Anyone else, questions?
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else wants to speak in favor of or against the proposed ordinance? If not, we will close the public hearing. I'll ask for any other comments from the council.
If, if the rest of the council is open to it, I would, I would be open to adjusting that thousand feet if we want to make it bigger, such as two thousand or something, go along with what you said, Mayor.
And I, I appreciate that, but a thousand feet, that's almost a quarter of a mile, right? And if you make it a half a mile, and Denison's only so big, I, I certainly appreciate your point.
Yeah.
I just don't know if that is too many feet.
Yeah.
But.
So it would be interesting to see the kind of Venn diagram that shows what that would limit the geography to.
Right.
Having grown up in a household that, where a father smoked four packs a day, he would drive as far as he needs to get a cigarette.
A thousand feet is three and a third football fields, right?
Unless you're on Robert's football team, and then they played on a single.
And it was a little bit shorter.
That's how Texas, oh, wait.
Six man.
But if you did a thousand feet away from the school specifically as opposed to the church, are you, are you increasing the thousand across the board to any of the targets that we're trying to avoid?
I'm pretty much open with anything. I have nothing specific.
Because even if it was a thousand feet, we wouldn't have that new travel center out by the high school, right? And that couldn't have been built.
Well, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't fall under this, right? Because it's, it would.
This is just a straight bank store.
Oh, and the overlay, that's not in the overlay.
Yeah, so it would not, it would not cover the gas station. It would just vape and smoke shops.
That's right, that's right.
So effectively what you're incentivizing is more gas stations.
Right.
Roughly the, the length of a city block, how much is that? Is it about a thousand feet? I know we have fifty-foot wide lots and probably.
Is there Main Street, Donna?
I don't think it's a thousand.
I think every block would be shorter than that, right?
Yeah, because a thousand feet, right, is three football fields, right?
About three hundred feet a block, maybe.
Well, as we mentioned earlier, we can amend it in future.
I'm not trying to shoot down what you're saying.
No, I, I was just open to it. I'm fine with a thousand feet, too. We can start with that, and if we feel that it's, we can always change it a little, too. I'm fine with that, too.
Any other comments? Would there be a motion?
Let me get my sheet out.
I've moved to approve the ordinance for the proposed amendment as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Massey, a secondment by Councilman Courtwright. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move to item five, five B, please, and that's Mr. Lay. This is an item for discussion on a public hearing and receive testimony from Neighborhood Services regarding an unsafe structure at thirty-five eighteen Valentine Drive. Mr. Lay, please.
Good evening. I appreciate y'all's opportunity to be here, to present this case to you. On October the second, twenty twenty-four, Mary Pearl Craig Chapin, Jesse R. Craig, Mary Chapin, the estate of Jesse Reeves Craig, and the estate of Jesse R. Craig, were given notice of violation to repair, demolish the structures at thirty-five eighteen Valentine The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter thirteen, Article seven, Section thirteen dash one fifty-four, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen of the Denison Code of Ordinances. The structure was posted as unsafe on September the fifth, twenty twenty-four. The appraised value of the improvements is twelve thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars, and the total property value is fifty-three thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for two thousand twenty-four. The property is currently in tax arrears totaling three thousand seventy-five dollars and two cents due to non-payment the past two years. There was an active water account last October of twenty twenty-three at this property. As you can see from the photos, the property value for the improvements probably is less than let it was, of twelve thousand dollars. There are two mobile homes, this being one of them, and this being a little bit further shot of the other one. Both of them are completely uninhabitable and dangerous. The property itself, just due to the volume of stuff that has accumulated there, present multiple life, health, safety concerns, it's an attractive nuisance in that neighborhood. There's a record of violations, notices, and unsafe conditions of the property on file in the Neighborhood Services Office. Staff is requesting council to declare the structures unsafe and to order their removal. And I would be happy to answer any questions about this location.
Any questions?
In today's market, that probably rents for at least a thousand, right?
You know, we laugh, but unfortunately, there was someone living here a year ago. What the damage you see could not have only taken a year to get there. There was screening up where you couldn't see this, and at some point, fairly recently, the screening was removed, and it just is like, I mean, this is close to where I live, and I'm going, how, I mean, I just couldn't believe it was there.
How many dwellings are on that property?
There's two, two mobile homes, and there's an accessory building, so just two residential structures, or what's left of them.
Any questions or comments? If not, thank you, Mr. Lay.
Thank you.
Would there be a motion for, sorry, sorry, we have a public hearing, is, we are opening a public hearing now on this, this item for thirty-five eighteen Valentine Drive. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of or against this, this proposal? If not, hearing none or seeing none, we'll close the public meeting now. Is there any other questions from council? If not, we're looking for a motion.
Mayor, I move to declare the structures at thirty-five eighteen Valentine Drive a nuisance and unsafe, to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
A second.
Have a motion by Councilman Courtwright, a second by Councilman Redwine. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That concludes the regular business for the council. We have no need for an executive session this evening, so I want to thank everyone for coming. Thanks for taking part in your city government. Thank you, Dr. Kirkbry, for being here and the update on our schools. And if there's no other comments or questions, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.